I, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
We will call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 7th. We are in City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street. If the clerk would please call the roll to get us started?
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Present.
Jody Hollingshead?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Jenny Saleen?
Here.
Mark Downs?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Trumbull?
Here.
Our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have the September 16th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes and the September 16th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as September 30th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes and September 30th, 2025 Committee of the Hall Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Approved by consensus? Yes, great. We will move on to correspondence. We have a few items of correspondence this evening. The first of which is a Municipal Government Week Proclamation. I believe Clerk Wade, you receive this. Whereas the city of Morgantown is proud to join in celebrating the 30th Annual Municipal Government Week, October 13th to 19th, 2025, as proclaimed by Governor Patrick Morrissey. And whereas this week-long observance highlights the vital role municipalities play in strengthening communities across the state of West Virginia. And whereas all incorporated cities, towns, and villages in West Virginia provide essential services to their citizens, including public safety, infrastructure, recreation, and community development. And whereas many citizens are not always aware of the full range of services their municipalities provide or of the officials and employees who ensure these services are delivered effectively. And whereas municipal officials desire to inform residents of the important investments made on their behalf and to strengthen understanding of how local government impacts daily life. And whereas Municipal Government Week provides opportunities for schools, residents, and community leaders to participate in activities that showcase the work of municipal government and its positive impact on the quality of life for all West Virginians. And whereas the city of Morgantown assists in educating citizens and installing positive perception of government, particularly at the municipal level. Now therefore, I, Danielle Trumbull, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of October 13th to 19th, 2025, as Municipal Government Week in the city of Morgantown, and encourage all citizens to engage in this celebration, learn more about their local government, and recognize the dedication of those who serve their community. We will present this to Clerk Wade. You're not taking pictures today?
They're gonna take pictures now.
Okay. Not spending just...
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you want to tell everyone about, or during your... The second item of correspondence is National Community Planning Month Proclamation. Remove the flag from this one, too. Director of Development Services, Rick Jaeger, here to accept, as well as Caitlin Lewis, our... I'm sorry, what is your... It's a long...
I know. Community Development Services Coordinator.
Great. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use questions. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of appointed planning and zoning board members, as well as other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Morgantown. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in the community, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Danielle Trumbull, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, on behalf of Morgantown City Council, do hereby designate the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. We will present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you, Council, and thank you for this proclamation. I just wanted to thank publicly again our citizen planners that volunteer their time each month to review meeting packets, conduct public hearings, and engage in thoughtful discussion about our community and its future. Over the course of a year, these volunteers give countless hours of their time and service to our community, and we're grateful that they do that. And just wanted to, you know, whether it's the Planning Commission or Board of Zoning Appeals, or other commissions and boards of the city, appreciate their time and appreciate the time you all spend on appointing folks to those key positions in our community. We need them to help do our work in town. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We should bring that proclamation to the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday. Item C on correspondence is the Morgantown Tool Lending Library Presentation. And we will ask Caitlin Lewis, the Community Development Services Coordinator, to come back for that.
Yes. Actually, let me get the slideshow pulled up.
The mouse doesn't always like to be far away.
Actually, it'd be great if I could have a keyboard up here.
I'm not sure that mouse likes to be anywhere.
This should work.
Okay. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak about this project. A lot of you guys have probably heard about the Tool Lending Library already, or maybe you've had a chance to see it in action during some of the community cleanups that we've conducted around town. And so it's really exciting to get to actually speak about the project today. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how it came about briefly, and then I'm going to talk about how the program is structured and how we're going to roll it out going forward. So to begin, I just want to talk a little bit about why the program was proposed. So our team recognized that there were some barriers in place for property maintenance, whether that's a financial barrier or whether that's the hesitancy to purchase a tool that you might only need to use one or two times. And so we saw that other communities were kind of doing this Tool Lending Library program and felt that that model could apply here. And so we wanted to put this forward as a program that could potentially empower local organizations to do and to have some of the resources to foster the change that they want to, you know, want to do, and conduct like community cleanup events and neighborhood improvement projects, and then also to equip residents with the tools that they need to help with property maintenance. So how the program got started? It was a grant-funded project, so it was funded with $50,000 of an ARPA grant. And that grant money was used to purchase the tool... two tool trailers that you see in the picture there. So one of the tool trailers is 6x10, and the other is 8x16. The larger one is intended to house our full inventory. And the smaller one is going to equip us to be able to enable some delivery service directly to project sites for local organizations. So that's just a little look at the trailers and what they look like, and kind of a sneak peek of what's inside. And then we also use that funding to purchase the inventory, which you may have gotten a digital copy of our inventory as well. So that is what is being housed in our large trailer, and that's the inventory that we're starting with with this project. So here's like a high-level view of the program, kind of zoomed out. This is like the elevator pitch. So basically, it's a free tool lending library that's open to all residents of the city of Morgantown, local organizations, or groups. And we have an inventory of about 500 tools. Access to it is managed through MyTurn, which is a software. It's common lending software. It's very user-friendly, and I'll show you a little bit about what that looks like as well. We're doing deliveries to some project sites and housing our inventory in two mobile trailers. And then we have a couple different membership types that will determine borrowing limits and tool access, and I'll talk about that some, too. But all that together will help support property maintenance and community projects and some neighborhood initiatives. So here's a look at the homepage. And like I mentioned, this is operated through an online platform. So if you want to check something out through the Tool Lending Library, you'll have to make an account here and use our digital platform. So this is the homepage, and here you can take a look at the inventory and browse through our tools that we have available. You can also create an account. You can check out our hours. And then there in the middle, in that body of text, you can view a little bit more about like how to get signed up. So there's some place to put some more information there as well. So to talk a little bit about membership, the big headline for this is all our memberships are free. There is no paid membership to sign up. It's free. We won't be charging anything for memberships. That said, we're offering three options for memberships. And this is... We want to be able to offer accessibility, and we also want to make sure that we're securing our inventory. So we have three options for members. And the first one is the Everyday Membership, which is, gives you access to tools under or at $250 of a signed value. And you don't have to put a credit card down on file for that. So you can sign up. We'll check your ID. No credit card required. And there's a sort of a borrowing limit on how much you can check out. Project Membership, full inventory access. You do have to put a credit card on file, but you can check out anything in our inventory. And then Local Organization Membership, which is intended for local organizations or nonprofit groups. And then you would have one representative from that local organization sign up. You get access to the full inventory, and you get access to deliveries with our small trailer to project sites as well. And that also requires a credit card on file, and we would have one representative sort of sign and be responsible for the group in that instance. And so all these memberships require proof of ID. And then we'll check the address to make sure that you're a Morgantown City resident. If, in this case, that somebody's ID address doesn't match, then we would ask for a proof of residence. Like, for example, if there's a student who has their hometown address on their ID, then we might ask for their current Morgantown, like a utility bill or something to confirm they're a Morgantown resident. There's a caveat to the assigned value. So... And I can answer more questions about this, but MyTurn allows us to put a custom value on some things. So for certain items, the assigned value will equal the dollar value of that item. For other items, like the power drill, for example, we might assign a custom value that is lower than the dollar value so that people can check out a power drill and a couple other items. But they may not be able to check out like a more expensive, higher liability item, like the chainsaw, for example. And if there's any questions about that, I can answer questions about that, too. So to talk a little bit about, once somebody's registered, you'll get access to the inventory. This is what that page looks like. It's really very user-friendly. I think it's kind of clear how you would go down through and scroll. But if you pick an object, an item that you want to check out, you can see how many are available. You can see that it's in stock right now. And you can click to reserve it. And then on my end, on the back end, if I need to check somebody out, I can do that as well. So if somebody wants to come into our front desk and get checked out through that, they can do that through us. And then if you... Once you're scheduling at home, if you click into your item, this is the screen that you'll see. So you can get some more information about the item itself, the manufacturer, the model number, the weight of the item, if that's relevant. Which if you, you know, need to get help carrying something, then maybe that comes into play there. And then there's some more information about the item itself. Here, we have an option to add a warning label or a how-to video as well. So like if somebody is having trouble restringing the string trimmer, for example, we can put a YouTube video in there that shows them how to do that. So then we're not, you know, fielding calls, troubleshooting, and things like that. All that information can be available. And then for checking it out, a calendar will appear and show you what dates are available to check something out so that you'll know when you can reserve an item. The checkout screen is really straightforward. This is something you would see as a resident as you're going through and checking something out. Here's where you do all transactions with this program. So check something back in. You can see what all items you're checking out. You can see the due date really clearly. If I need to put a custom due date in there, for example, if somebody's sick or they can't come in, then I can alter that as well. And then you can upgrade your membership here, too, and view any fees. MyTurn would automatically track or assess any fees as well. And so here's just a quick breakdown of the loan periods and the renewals and the fees. So if somebody checks an item out, they'll get a standard loan period of seven days. So you get seven days with the item. You can renew it one time for seven days. And then after that, there's a buffer period before you can renew again. And that's kind of to discourage people from just chronically checking things out all the time. And if you return something late, we're charging a dollar a day late fee until 30 days is reached, at which point the full replacement cost of the item is either billed to the credit card on file or billed to the address that we have on file, depending on what your membership is. If there's a damaged tool, then we'll assess that and see if we can, you know, bill for the cost of a part versus the entire item. But that'll be sort of a discretionary situation. And then deliveries, like I mentioned, we're asking for 30 days notice for that and a $15 charge to cover gas incidentals on deliveries. And I just put together a couple little scenarios to walk through. I won't read off these directly, but this is just to kind of illustrate how somebody will engage with the program. So if you imagine Jane, as a student, like renting in South Park, she signs up because she wants to do like an art project and needs to borrow a power drill. She doesn't have a credit card, so she would be an Everyday Member. Then, once she signs her waiver, she checks out her items. She'll check them out for seven days. When she shows up, maybe her address is different than what's on her ID. So we would just ask her to give her her lease agreement or something to confirm her address. Then she'll check out for seven days, return the items on time. If she had been late, then we would mail whatever bill to that address on file. We'll inspect the tools and put them back in our inventory and then get ready for the next member. And then, you know, to talk about that other membership as an Everyday Member, this is imagining Tom dealing with storm debris on his property. He wants, he needs to use a chainsaw. So he would sign up to be the project member. He would put his credit card down on file, check out the chainsaw. If he, for example, forgot to return something for two weeks, then he would have a $14 bill on his MyTurn account, and he wouldn't be able to check anything else until he made that current. And if he faces an emergency or something like that, then he can communicate with us, and we have the ability to waive those fees on a case-by-case basis if we need to. And then lastly, just to talk about, a local organization might sign up to host like... The Neighborhood Association might want to do a volunteer cleanup event. So they would have a representative, maybe the chairperson, sign up through MyTurn, check out what tools they would like, pick the date that they want to do this. And then we would, staff would transport the trailer to the project site, let them conduct their cleanup. And then, you know, we may take the trailer back that day or the next workday, whatever is applicable there. And then afterwards, we would collect all the tools and everything and take that back. And so, yeah, I think what's exciting about this project is that it's hopefully something that we can build on in the future. Right now, we have limited hours and a set inventory, but I hope we can expand that in the future and offer, you know, more specialized tools. I'd love to be able to expand our hours and expand our delivery services in the future. That's kind of where I see this going. And then maybe accepting donations. That's a question that I've got from a lot of people already, which is great. And then hopefully, I'd love to explore like a library of things model in the future and offer things like Wi-Fi hotspots or like mountain bike repair gear and stuff like that that's more specialized. So, yeah, that's kind of the future outlook at the program. But with that, I'd like to take any questions that you guys might have?
So, um, and maybe you already, I don't know if it's a question or an observation. In the event that someone does... Hold on, I forgot. I was supposed to lean forward. They were talking to the microphone.
Kind of.
All right, there we go. In the event that somebody rents a tool, do we have like backup tools in case somebody holds on to theirs for too long and another person has signed up to rent?
Yeah, most of the tools that we have, we have two, at least. I don't know that there's anything that we just have one of. Maybe there... I think we maybe just have one chainsaw. But for the most part, we have more than one. And so the intention is, yeah, somebody... If somebody needs to check out the weed whacker, then we've got two of them. We have a backup. So if somebody hasn't returned it, then there's a second one. And hopefully, you know, we can get a third and, you know, as things expand, to kind of make it more flexible for people.
Okay. That was my... My only concern was if like, someone uses the chainsaw and the chain comes off and you have to get it repaired. I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that might put it out of stock for some time while we're getting it repaired. If that's something that we find like people are just really needing to use the chainsaw, then maybe we need to get a second one. Hopefully, that's something that we can look at. Yeah, right now, if that specific thing were to happen, we might just have it be on board for a little while. And then it would say on there, like, "In Maintenance", on software.
I think this is a fantastic program and just very well thought out.
Thank you.
Wonderful job.
Other questions for Caitlin?
I guess just to comment, the time that we had the opportunity to use it when we were first starting the mushroom trail, it was just wonderful to be able to go back in and pick out a couple. And there were some scouts that were participating.
Yeah.
And just hand out tools to the scouts and the way we went. So that was very useful, because I had my tools that usually are what got used, and they were all in my car. And I just left them where they were and pulled these out. So very much appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been great to see with some of those cleanups, like how much work we can get done in a short time period with, you know, once we have all the equipment on hand and stuff. Thank you.
Caitlin, obviously, you know I use it a lot. I think it's a wonderful idea, so. So got a nice list for you next year.
Yeah, no, that's great. And, yeah, I'm really excited about all the projects that we're going to get to do. And what's luck... What I think is good about this is it's very flexible, and the software that we've used is very flexible. And so if we're finding that something's not working, we can change it. And I think people have been really excited about the program. And so I'm hoping that it'll just grow from here.
Caitlin, I'm so impressed by this. I'm very, very excited about it. My... The South Park Neighborhood Association has talked about a lending library for the neighborhood, and I'm so excited to go to the meeting next year and say, "Guess what? Great news." One question I have, and forgive me if this is due to naivety on my part, but is there... Is there any possibility, or have you already thought of collaborating with code enforcement to kind of connect people who maybe just need to get a little repair done to avoid that fee?
Yeah.
That kind of thing?
Yeah, so I think that was kind of some of the thought that went into the program on the back end when it first started. And this was before I came on board, so I can't 100% speak to before it got started. But yes, is the short answer. And I think we've been working with our communications team to develop like a quick guide that could potentially be something that's just a one-pager to hand out to people so that if they're in a situation where they're struggling with property maintenance, we can hand them this quick guide and show them, "Here's how you can get signed up. And, you know, here's this resource that you have available." So, yes.
That's great. Thank you.
No matter how user-friendly we think something is, there's always going to be someone who struggles with that, someone who's less digitally literate. I know with our online permitting process, they can go down to the Code Enforcement Office downstairs, and someone will walk them through the process and help them out. If someone is having trouble using the MyTurn software, is that still a service that's available? Can they come in downstairs and someone will help them set up their account or things like that?
Yes, for certain things. So if they need help setting up an account or checking out a tool, we as admins can do any of that for them. If they need help with a password reset, there's a stock email that we have to email through MyTurn that we would reach out to. If there's any kind of like unique troubleshooting issues, we would have to reach out to MyTurn to resolve that. But any kind of like of the day-to-day type stuff that people might struggle with, if they're struggling getting signed up, if they're, you know, confused about how to check out, that stuff that we can all do on our end as admins, too. So somebody could easily just come into the office if they're really having a hard time. And either... And we've been working with our front desk staff as well to kind of... So theoretically, somebody could sit with our front desk somebody could sit with our front desk and have the iPad there and get signed up and resolve some of those. If it's more technical, we would have to reach out to the platform to resolve it.
In that same vein, is this, does this platform allow for like accessibility, like screen readers or things like that?
Um, yeah. Is, does it, is it mobile friendly? Is that what you mean?
No, like for people who maybe are low vision that would need their screen.
Oh, sure. You know, I don't know that there are specific accessibility options in it, but it's really customizable. Like our home screen is, we just enter HTML. So if we need to change anything, like let's say we have, we want to offer something that's friendly for colorblind folks, then we can, we can customize that homepage and stuff. Does that connect?
Yeah, yeah. Anything we can do to make it more.
Yeah, it's, it's, what's really nice about it is that basically the homepage editing and any of the editing of the, the interface is all just fully customizable within, within the admin panel. So, yeah.
What's stopping us from taking donations now?
Well, I'd like to take donations. I can't ensure the quality of the tools that I'm getting in right now. Like if I get somebody's donated tool in, it may not run as long as what some of our brand-new tools do. So basically, I just want to make sure that the program is up and running and is working efficiently before we start like working in new things that we might have to troubleshoot.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And I may have, sorry, Jen.
No, no, no.
I may have missed this when you were talking, so if I did, I apologize. Is it that anybody can request that you deliver the tools or is that only for specific ones?
That is only for specific tools, is it? No, it's only, you can request any tool that you'd like to have delivered. And that's so that people can request like 50 litter grabbers if they want to. I don't imagine that volunteer organizations will check out like adjustable wrenches and stuff too much, but they, they can check out anything that they'd like to and just put in there that they'd like it for delivery and then we'll know to load up the trailer.
Okay. Thank you.
How do you handle routine maintenance?
So.
Sharpening.
Yes. So minor maintenance stuff. I've talked to some of our building maintenance crew to kind of help with some of that stuff. If there's any major repairs or anything like that, we'll have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. But like sharpening of the blades and stuff, we can handle that in-house. And we've kind of talked to some folks and asked them to kind of incorporate that into the scope of what they do, so.
Thanks.
One more accessibility question. Because you've clearly thought of just about everything and I'm so impressed. But are we working with the library at all? And that's a comms thing too, I understand. But as far as people who might not have access to a computer or a mobile device, are we, are we educating folks at the library about what this is, what they do?
Yeah.
And just kind of connecting those dots as a place where people can go?
I have had some preliminary discussions with some folks at the library about that, and that's definitely an intention of mine. I can't say that we have like been workshopping how we're going to do that, but yes, that is, that's being thought about and that's definitely something. A lot of these are typically run through the public library, tool libraries anyway. So they're kind of familiar with the model of this and so I'll definitely be asking them for help.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
When's the go-live?
So we are going to be able to go live by the end of this month. I'm looking at sort of the last couple of weeks in October, so, yeah.
Great. And I'm sure we will put that out on our city's social media.
Yes, yep. And that's up and coming.
Ready for people to make accounts.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thanks much.
That is the end of our correspondence this evening, which brings us to a public hearing. This is for anyone wishing to comment on a specific item. Item is an ordinance for a lease agreement with Intune Counseling LLC for office space at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. So we will open this public hearing if there is anyone wishing to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on. We, our only item of unfinished business is boards and commissions. I don't believe we have any appointments that we are making. So we will move right into our public portion, which shall be, shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Usually that is, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes to speak on whatever items you would wish to speak on. Just please no personal comments or attacks. We do have a signup sheet. We will go with these folks first, but anyone else wishing to speak after is welcome to do so. The first person on the list is Susan Rabel.
Thank you very much. I wanted to come this evening and say thank you to you all. We just closed up our, or finished our West Virginia Governor's Conference on Tourism, and it was kind of a really big deal. I called Jamie to say thank you and how could we get this information out to you as quickly as possible. There was a lot of highlights. We handed out all kinds of information driving people to downtown Morgantown. We had over 400 attendees. We did a reception at the amphitheater. We also, the Governor's Department wanted to go ahead and do a reception at WBU Football Stadium, which we also did. And then our last night, we had our awards ceremony. And I am thrilled to tell you that we were the, for the third year in a row, we were the winner of the Future of Tourism Award for the state of West Virginia. That's a really big deal. We also won the Digital Innovation Award for all of our new website and all the digital stuff that we're doing. Social media and a bunch of, we have our AI chatbot. His name is Bruce. He's rather kind of the big deal. And then we also won the Mountain State Tourism Development Award for hosting the Geo Woodstock 21 that went everywhere, I mean, just everywhere, thousands of people everywhere. And that was in cooperation or coordination with Mark Webb, who actually was the event coordinator. He also won the Innovator Showdown Award. And then the rest of the Mountaineer Country Region, collectively, we accounted for 40% of one category and 50% of another category. So we did really, really, really well. And then this morning, I was really thrilled to see that Morgantown, through our programs and our efforts, and, oh, this shirt. This is some of our initiatives here. We kind of got ourselves out there. But we were mentioned on Travel and Tour World. It's a, it's an international publication. They have more than 20 million readers and are available worldwide. That's in-kind media that we're doing. And at the conference, the airport was acknowledged for increased employments. We also were acknowledged for the increase in our international travel. So it kind of gives me chill bumps because the stuff we've been working on for a while and a while and a while and a while, I started off by saying, good, welcome to Morgantown. So we just really want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you all and represent not just more central West Virginia Mountaineer Country, but the city of Morgantown. And I know we don't have questions, but I just wanted to share and say thank you.
Great. So. Thank you, Susan. It's great news. The next person on the signup sheet is Ethan Enderline.
Ethan Enderline, local government liaison of WBU's SGA, live at 500 Station Street. I already sent this in an email to you all, but we wanted to invite you all to the upcoming Safety Walk. I think I sent, I said it in a city council meeting in September already, but we finally like hashed out all the details. And actually, I sent two emails. The first one, I somehow managed to send it with white text. I don't know how I did that. But I sent an email, I sent a second email after that for the off chance that you didn't receive that and maybe check your spam. Anyways, though, the Safety Walks are going to take place October, Thursday, October 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There is a signup form in the email that I attached. I know a couple of you already signed up to that and I really appreciate it. Anyone in the gallery, if they are interested to, they can sign up. You just talk to me after the meeting. We're going to have one group walk in the area of the downtown and then another group walk in the Evansdale area. This semester, we're trying to keep the two groups roughly even. So when you do sign up, the form will ask you for your preference of where you want to walk. I'm going to do my best to assign people based on their preference, but we don't want a situation where 20 people decide they want to walk at the downtown and like two people decide they want to walk at Evansdale. So if the numbers are significantly lopsided, I may have to change some people over, but I'm going to prioritize anybody who signs up earlier. That's all I have, though, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next person on the list, Annie Cronin-Yorick.
I left a lot of extra space so other people could sign up ahead of me.
You still have plenty of space up there.
Human Rights Commission. Firstly, it is the last week of, you know, Heritage Month. Thank you very much for doing that. I know those. It's kind of a honor. But we'd love to be celebrating. Look at our heritage and neighbors. October is also Domestic Violence Month. I don't know if anyone is doing a proclamation on that.
I will be doing a proclamation at a candlelight vigil someday.
Looking at my own webpage and how many minutes that I have posted and how many judges I've posted today, thank you very much. But in looking at the cities, there are several months where the minutes are missing, and I don't know if you're aware of that. It seems like we've been passing minutes at each meeting. But they're not popping up. And that could be just me? I could hate my technology. But I just checked on my phone as well and the minutes are not popping up early. April until the end of August, well, beginning of September, really. I think you've been passing them, so. My question to you, the city is not allowed to solicitate food and beverage donations from local businesses, is my understanding. In 2019, I admitted my personal capacity because I wasn't speaking to, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, to a Starbucks store and asked what they were doing with all the food that was going in those bags at the end of the night. They're going to dumpster, why? Because there are a lot of homeless people who need it. Oh, can't donate, liability. I persuaded them away from that. And every day for a year, I went to that one Starbucks store and collected their leftover food and brought it to the bus run house because they're the only ones that had refrigerators at the time. And then the emergency shelter would go there and pick up the food and serve it for breakfast. And apparently, from what I'm told, from what was told the rest run, that that fed the entire emergency shelter for a year, that they only needed to buy milk after those donations. So in that spirit, I would like to ask my handy-dandy Starbucks store, through the Human Rights Commission, if it would donate food to the warming shelter because it was, appeared to be a problem, blasphemous funding food and that sort of thing. So unless the city would like to do that.
The other microphone is still.
I think that's the problem.
I hope that was the problem. Try again.
Look, like. Human Rights Commission. Donations. Donations, yes. So if this council is able to, or like to arrange that at the time, and if not, I'm going to bring my jeep to my Starbucks and take their food away. And their 50-gallon garbage bags. It's food in its package, untouched, unexpired. Just by company policy, they're not allowed to put it out to the next day. And I consider that kind of waste, waste and such things to handle, so I'd like to help out warming shelter to the decracking. Brian at Deputy Mayor Butcher, more precisely. Thank you for asking a question about whether the website was ADA compliant. That's my understanding, reading the ADA, that websites are required to be ADA compliant, especially when they're government websites. And since it seems like a special program and not necessarily government services, that they must be compliant to an extent possible. Usually, most platforms have just a little button attached to the little button there. If you're complying from that. But there did that support server. And it's on the open end of the button, you can't read it. Important. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll, we'll hear in two weeks.
Possibly soon.
Thank you, Annie. The last person on the signup sheet is Ed Seifert.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Ed Seifert and I'm a lifelong resident.
Morgantown?
My wife and I have been married 30 years. She's also a Morgantown girl. And we raised our kids here. I have a son who's up on the hill at Mountaineer Middle, a daughter who's a sophomore at WBU, a daughter who works down at the All Center, some of you may know her. She is the outreach and programming coordinator for the public library. Her name's Abby. And then I have a son in California, a son and daughter who share an apartment in Brooklyn. So if anyone is having, we're at six. And the reason I bring them up is because it was my kids who gave me an idea to maybe try to start a micro market in the airport. And my son travels home from California. He comes from LAX to Chicago to the airport. My daughter, who's in Brooklyn, used to live in Philadelphia for five years and she would take an Amtrak to DC and then catch a plane to Morgantown on the old eight-seaters that were around. And they might get in at five till midnight. And by the time they grab their bag, it's 12:15 in the morning and like every kid, they always say one day, Dad, I'm hungry. So off to Sheetz or Circle K or somewhere, to get them a snack in the middle of the night, so.
Just picking them up over the years gave me the idea that maybe we could start a micro market in the airport. If a micro market is terminology you're not familiar with, you might be familiar with seeing it or experiencing when you're traveling airports. It's a place where you grab a snack, grab a drink, grab souvenirs. You know, when I travel for work, I always grab a souvenir from the airport from my son, who's twelve, so he doesn't forget that once in a while. Traveling's hard. Traveling can be grueling, so having something like that is just kind of a pick-me-up. I had two goals. One would be to provide service for the community. I know talking to Mr. Rabel, the people who fly into Morgantown or, you know, as far north as Washington and Union Towns, you know, down to Clarksville, Preston County, Morgantown, Clarksville, Ferno, to be able to provide them service while they travel. But also bring value and improve the services at the airport. I think when you travel and you see things like that, you have an opportunity to, you know, grab a refreshment or something, it just makes your day go a little better. So be able to improve the services at the airport, make it seem more viable to travelers. Maybe they'll start using the airport more, and that would help the micro market, and then the micro market helps the airport, it just becomes cyclical. So I would like for you to consider opening a micro market more time. Thank you for your time giving the question. You got a minute?
We do not generally ask questions or engage during this time, but if you share your contact information with Director Rabel, I'm sure we would, we would love to talk to you about that.
This is, this, Mayor, this is item C on the consent agenda tonight.
Okay. Oh, that's the 304 Ventures.
Yes, sorry. We've got, we didn't specify that by title, so I wanted to make sure to point that out. Thank you for being here tonight.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public portion? Seeing none, we will close the public portion and move into, we don't have any special committee reports, so we will move on to the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda this evening. I will read them all if any member of council wishes to remove any item. We can do that after they are stated. So item A, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for Governor's Highway Safety Program grant. Item B, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance for a lease agreement with Intune Counseling LLC for office space at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Item C, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance for a commercial lease and operating agreement with the 304 Ventures LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Item D, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of one parcel of real estate on East Brookway Avenue from R1A Single Family Residential District to R2 Single and Two Family Residential District. Item E, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of three parcels of real estate business near Hartman Run Road from I-1 Industrial District to B2 Service Business District. Item F, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending Section 1367, Table 1367 dot 11 dot 01, as it pertains to the approved street and tree shrub list in the Planning and Zoning Code. Item G, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance providing for amendments to Article 1718 of City Code entitled Vacant Structure Code. And finally, item H, adoption of updated exemption procedure for vacant structures code. That's a lot? Is there any?
I'd like to see item C removed just for some discussion.
Okay.
We will remove. Just to hear more about it. I believe that's, that's the item that we were, that was just referred to.
Correct.
We will remove item C.
That's what I would like to see removed. Everything else?
Everything else, good? All right. We will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the other items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move, move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Accept item C.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Now, if we could please call. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Jody Hongson?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Ginny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trouble?
Yes. Passes seven zero.
We will now move on to new business, and first, we will take up the item removed from the consent agenda, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance for a commercial lease and operating agreement with the 304 Ventures LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport.
Yes, Mayor, I'd invite you back up to the dais and certainly if council would like additional information or has questions for clarification, but staff is recommending approval of this lease agreement, lease and operating agreement.
And I would, I would anticipate approval on this item. I did not pull it off for any other reason, but I just wanted to hear more about it, like where, where it would be located and what kind of items and how it worked. Because I could tell that you had a general idea, but I'm sure you have more specifics you could give us.
I do. I didn't realize I was limited to four minutes. I got really nervous because I talk a lot, so I cut out a whole bunch of what I was going to say. It'll be, I don't know how often you're in the airport?
Pretty often.
Okay. There is a glass display case with a wooden floor, like on a triangle.
Yeah.
Like triangle, would you like?
Nice.
Just that little area. It's a hundred and thirty, something, thirty-five.
Including the case? So you have items in the case presumably?
I'm sorry?
So you would have items in that case presumably?
Yes.
And what type of items?
It will be refreshments, soft drinks, water, energy drinks, iced coffees. There will be snacks, potato chips, fettuccine, popcorn, mince gums. There will be for people who forget things when they're traveling, small tools you have with, like toothbrush or travel and toothpaste. There will also be electronics for people who have their comb charger, maybe their earbuds break. earbuds ready, things like that, just to make your travel a little more.
And would there be a person there?
There will not be. It will be unmanned.
Yeah.
There will be a kiosk.
Yeah.
And the kiosk will have a large screen displayed with a scanner. And a patron will take the items, scan the items, display the total amount they purchased, how much it is, and they'll pay electronically with a debit card, credit card, Apple Pay, any kind of electronic form of payment.
Will be, will there be a camera involved?
There will be, yes. The items that I mentioned, obviously, they don't have a very large profit margin.
Yeah.
And a hundred and thirty-five square feet per centimeter, uh, there's not a lot of space to put a lot of products, so.
Yeah.
Um, there will have to be monitoring of things that are going on. Uh, I think that the clientele here is a little bit different than the clientele of most places, because most people are heavily invested to be at the airport. You're buying a ticket for hundreds of dollars, and the last thing you're willing to do is put a two dollar candy bar in your pocket, miss your trip.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I think that I would be naive to say that there won't be any theft, but um, I will, I will produce as many deterrents as I can, like cameras, perhaps mirrors up in the corners, um, those types of things.
Thank you, those are my questions, if anybody else? Other questions? Seems like a, a great program that will bring benefit to the airport and travelers alike, so.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion or any other questions for Mr. Seifert?
No, my dad had the same business. He ran the vending machines at a Dulles Airport, so I'm excited to see that.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven zero. And for those who think they haven't listened to me read enough tonight, buckle up, this is a long one. Our next item of new business, consideration of adoption of a supplemental parameters resolution of the City of Morgantown authorizing the conveyance of real property to the Morgantown Building Commission, the leasing of such property from the Morgantown Building Commission, the sale and issuance by the Building Commission of its lease revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five A Marilla Park Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed eleven million dollars, and the execution of all documents which may be necessary in connection with the foregoing and matters relating thereto, all relating to the construction of improvements at Marilla Park entitled as follows. Supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of the Morgantown Building Commission lease revenue bond, series twenty twenty-five A Marilla Park Improvement Project, and the leasing of certain real estate and personal property from the Morgantown Building Commission, approving the form of a lease agreement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure agreement, tax agreement, preliminary official statement, and other instruments, agreements, and documents, and authorizing the delivery of such preliminary official statement and the execution and delivery of the official statement, authorizing the obtaining of a credit rating for the series twenty twenty-five A bonds, all relating to the issuance of the Morgantown Building Commission lease revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five A Marilla Park Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is council's final step in authorizing the financing and construction of the Lower Marilla Park Improvements Project. City Council previously adopted its bond authorizing ordinance allowing for the financing, and this resolution will set and approve the final documents and parameters to be used in that financing. This is a building commission lease revenue bond transaction. The Building Commission will own the property, lease it back to the city, and the city will make lease payments that will be assigned to the bondholder, uh, which will be the mechanism for paying off the debt. The funding for those payments will come from Bo Park's twenty-five percent allocation of the sales tax. This is a companion and successor project to Bo Park's recent construction of the new Marilla Pool in the upper part of Marilla Park, and it will include an adventure and skate park in the former site of the, uh, the old Marilla Pool, construction of new tennis courts, new pickleball courts, a turf athletic field, and improvements to the existing Marilla Center, among other things. We have with us tonight, Tom Amon of Steptoe and Johnson, who's been engaged as the city's bond counsel for this transaction, Rob Steptoe of Cruz and Associates, who's been engaged as the city's underwriter to market the bonds, and they're going to talk a little bit about the details of that transaction, the schedule for financing, and uh, how the project will be closed. Oh, and I apologize, we also have with us Melissa Wiles, Executive Director of Bo Park, who has led this project with Thresher Engineering to design the improvements to the park.
Wonderful job reading that agenda item.
You guys really made it a long one. Oh, Dave, Dave done longer.
This really is last. Um, okay, so as Ryan mentioned, there's.
There's sort of that statutory process, part statutory, part custom practice, where we start off with this ordinance, which by statute is a three council meeting process with public hearing. And so typically, through that process, you don't really have all of the information that you need with respect to the financing at that point, it's developing, and therefore the ordinance is slightly broader in nature. The budget is typically being developed, you know, the market with respect to funds is being monitored, uh, the schedule is being prepared, those sorts of things, uh, the bidding documents, finalizing design, hopefully this is a big one. Um, so that's the ordinance process, and then at this stage, you know, we have a lot more information. And we do have the big results for the project, which is very helpful, and we know that that's within the not to exceed amount, it's all about the ordinance. We have our schedule finalized, and then we also have the primary documents, the bond documents of that. Huge, it's very voluminous, even more voluminous than the caption of the bond. Prepared, including the offering document. And so the supplemental resolution at this stage approves those forms of the documents that we're going to present, and then restates sort of the parameters of not to exceed the principal amount, the interest rate and such, and then authorizes the officers of the Building Commission and the city to sign a certificate that basically says, that approves the final bond terms as a result of the pricing, and that it's within the parameters as established by the ordinance and was reedged right by the supplemental resolution. So there, the process from here would be that the offering document is basically finalized, our forms of documents are very closely finalized, supplemental approves the use of the offering document, so then Cruz would go out, Cruz and Associates, the underwriter, and what you would call post that preliminary official statement, and then that tells investors, it's a very detailed description of what the bond offering entails, the terms, the project, the city's credit, et cetera. And then the bondholders sort of know what they're buying at that point, and then there's an order period that ensues, and then on the day of pricing, Cruz and Associates gets all that information together, comes back with the final, what you would call the scale of all the different principal amounts and the interest rates for each bond, and the repayment term, et cetera, and the certificate would then be completed and signed by the officers that then approves those sale terms, and then immediately after that, then the bond purchase agreement is signed, and then that locks in those terms. So that's sort of how the process kind of plays out from there. So I think pricing is scheduled for, let me see, next Thursday, Rob?
Yep.
So that's the pricing, and then we have about two weeks to closing, at which time we take the pricing information from the sale, we put it in all these beautiful documents we prepared, and then we have pre-closing, where we sign the documents, and then two days later, a actual closing where Cruz will wire the funds to the bond trustee to actually fund the bonds in the project. So that's, that's basically what the supplemental resolution, which is the official action for tonight, that's what that approves, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but Rob Steptoe, we're, we're, uh, like Tom said, this is the final stage that allows us, giving us permission to go into the market once, uh, the offering document, or the official statement. Our goal is to, is to have that document registered in the market Thursday. Um, that will give us Friday, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, to, to market the bonds with the, with our investor network, and get indications of interest, and then on Thursday morning, like Tom said, for about two hours, we will, uh, we'll price, and if there are, if there's more demand, what we want, what we want is more demand than available bonds, and so that allows us to go back and negotiate some more, so that's, that's the beauty of a negotiated bond sale. I'd say about ninety percent of all municipal bonds are sold on a negotiated basis, because that allows that flexibility, not only there, if you've got more demand and more interest than supply, you can go back and achieve better efficiencies, lower interest rates and so forth, but also, um, with the, with the, what the other side of, of these sales are called competitive, but you have to set that date way out in time and stick with it, and if you've got market conditions that are volatile, and you want to change that pricing date, you can't really do that on a competitive sale basis. So that gives us the flexibility, uh, to change that pricing date if we had to for, you know, a day or two, if there was something, you know, uh, macro, macro wise, that we wanted to wait for a couple of days and let the markets settle out, uh, we can do that on a negotiated bond sale, so that's, that's what we're up to. Um, that's, that's what we've done in the past, and most of these lease revenue bond issues in North Virginia, uh, with building commissions, they're, you know, they're, they're a little bit complex, they're a little bit of a different animal, uh, so it takes a little bit more time, uh, explaining it to some investors, but, um, the great thing about you all is, um, you were successful in the bond rating process, uh, so we, you know, there are double eight three underlying, uh, credit rating, uh, for the city, and also a bond rating or a transaction rating of about eight two on the bond, so that should help drive the interest rate down and drive the demand up, because there aren't a lot of bond issues in the market right now, so this should, this should garner a lot of attention.
Great. Questions for Tom or Rob?
We also have Mel here.
Oh, I'm not going to let her get away. I was just seeing if there were questions for you guys before we brought Director Wiles. I do not want to allow her to approach her retirement without another opportunity. Our dear city, Assistant City Manager has brought up the, the renderings of the project, and we do have a couple of new council folks since we initially went through this, it's been several months, so if you would like to discuss a little bit about the project.
And actually, I really credit Marilla Pool for this project, because Marilla Pool was a project that we started in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, since a lot longer ago than that. Um, and basically, you know, during the public input process and the planning process for that project, when we realized that it might be a good idea to relocate the pool instead of trying to renovate what we had, um, that just opened up our minds and our hearts to Lower Marilla Park and everything that it means to the community, because there are so many different things going on, um, in Lower Marilla, and it really complements the diversity of recreation in our community. So in early two thousand twenty-three, we embarked on another mission, which was to garner public input for Lower Marilla Park and come up with a master plan. Um, and Ryan mentioned a lot of the things that came out of that master plan. Uh, and since we presented that, I think the last time we were here, or the original um, resolution was about a year ago, um, but since we had the master plan and we've done that, we did the other bid documents, um, we had a full competitive bid process, and the Bo Park Board recently, um, indicated that they were in favor of the lowest qualified bid for this project, which allowed us to give Rob and Tom the numbers that they needed in order for us to come back to you all tonight. Um, I just want to thank you guys for supporting recreation in this community. Um, we have a lot of things that we needed to upgrade and do and provide to our citizens that hadn't been upgraded in a long time, and it's because of you all we were able to do that, as well as to the administration, thank you for your support. We're very excited. I did about this project, and even though I won't be here in person to see it unfold, I can't wait to see it unfold. I will be keeping up with it, but thank you.
So just kind of a quick rundown for anyone who may not have been hit, from like right to left, the new Marilla Pool.
Yep.
The next down will be the tennis court complex with new parking and restrooms and shaded seating, a renovated Marilla Center moving into additional parking, and then the action sports, biking, skating park, and then a turf field, basketball court, and pickleball complex, correct? Am I forgetting anything?
All correct.
Yes. I've been looking at this project for a long time, too, so a, a complete redo of Lower Marilla Park to expand and putting in some permanent restroom facilities, some additional seating, especially for tennis spectators, um, some shaded seating, which will be really lovely, and making sure we maintain a fair amount of natural grass, green space for those of us whose preferred method of recreation is laying on a blanket, reading a book.
Absolutely. Um, and we are really excited about that, Danielle mentioned the restroom facilities, those will be all season restrooms. Um, we have heard from the community that we love and want all season restrooms, so we're really making an effort to do that. Um, green space, very important, improved trail connections, ADA accessibility, all of that included in the project. Could you tell us, so the restrooms will be adjacent to an all season building, is that? Yes, that is correct. Um, Marilla Center, um, as you look at Marilla Center now, the, what I call the back of Marilla Center is facing the current skate park, where that is. The restrooms will be built into that end of Marilla Center, um, and will be all season, and then we will maintain the kind of a rectangle, the rectangle of Marilla Center and renovate the inside for the same thing that we always used it for, basically, but park programming, rentals, um, and a space for program offices, um, which is needed for our internal use. So that's where they'll be located, so they'll be attached in part of Marilla Center. So will the heating system be redone in Marilla Center? It will, yes. Will it be quieter? It will be quieter, yes. More effective? And the fans might actually work all the time. It's kind of cool. Very exciting. And there's basketball in there. There is basketball, it is down where the rec field is. And the pickleball courts, yes. And then some perimeter walking, or? Perimeter walking, improved trailhead, um, just past the basketball courts and pickleball. Um, the trailhead to Marilla Connector Trail is going to be improved. We work with the Long Valley Green Space Coalition, they've adopted that trail, and they do a lot of great work over there, um, so we are talking with them about. Trailhead improvements and signage and things of that nature. Also important to note that the Marilla Pavilion will be replaced during. Yes. Yes. When is, when is that scheduled? It will be part of this project. Okay. So it's technically in between Upper and Lower Marilla Park, but it is part of this project. Yeah. Other questions for Director Wiles?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work you've done over the last few years, especially when it was my first year here, and you took. and you took the time just really breaking it down for me. I just am so grateful for being able to work with you.
Glad to do so.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve. I think the other thanks that's in order is for the development of the team that you leave behind.
Yes.
And having a good working, functioning team that you know that you can retire and that they will factually.
I say.
Yet every time there is a compliment that none of this could happen without the Boe Park team. Great people.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions that are related to financing.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Wiles? Or we can allow her to sit back down? Thank you for coming. You have an early start today and you're, you're having a late evening, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hey, and Tom, so Tom, thanks. Well, they, they may be, but Tom, thanks. I appreciate you laying out the statutory process. Being new to council, this is the first bond issue that I've had the pleasure of looking at. It's a fantastic project that has been on my radar for a long time, just as a private citizen and, and in the capacity as Main Street President. But it made me extremely uncomfortable when I looked at this initially and said, wait a minute, where are the terms? Looking for a term sheet and there's, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing here. It's like, Ryan, what are we approving? So, but I, I, I understand the process. I guess, kind of what, have, do we have some, as you've analyzed this, do we have some threshold, like debt service coverage ratio or something that we've established?
Yes. So, and, and the terms are going to be laid out in the preliminary official statement, the POS, that investors will have to track. That's being worked on and has been worked on for months. But yes, the, the terms, interest rate, those types of things, we've got preliminary numbers where all of that stands. It's 25-year, it's a 25-year bond issue. It'll probably have, it's different from, let's say, like a direct bank purchase where you do have a term sheet. You've got one investor. So one investor, here's the term sheet.
Sure.
And that's, that's, that's how that's sort of worked through. Here, we've got multiple investors. So we've got this preliminary official statement that lays out all of the terms and conditions.
Essentially, they're types of investors, like retail.
Yeah. Institutional, so, so.
They, they could have different interests.
They do. And it's like banks and institutional guys like shorter, shorter maturities. A lot of retail or individual investors, like your high net worth individuals, they like the kind of the longer term because they're, they're buying.
Kind of holding on. Can mitigate risk, yeah.
Yeah. So, and, and they're going to get paid more interest because their, their principal won't be returned to them for a longer period of time. So they're exposed to more risk in the market. And so deservedly so, they get more interest, more yield for, for them to invest in the project. But yeah, generally, that's kind of how that works. Does that kind of help on that question?
They have a preliminary scale that they develop going into the pricing.
Yeah.
That, you know, they have an idea based on this snapshot of the market a couple of weeks ago or a week ago.
We've got preliminary numbers. And so for those 25 years, there's a scale.
Yeah.
Each of those matures at 25 and a certain interest rate or coupon that the city will pay and a yield that is received from the investor.
Sure. And I, but I guess I'm looking at, you know, and this is, the, the revenue in this case is sales tax revenue, 25% of Boe Park's share of it. And I'm, you know, okay, what's our, what's our, what's our debt? Yeah. What's our debt service anticipated? And what's our coverage based on?
That's a great question, counselor.
And then, and then, and then what does, what kind of shape does that leave the rest of? The, the operation in? And, and I trust you all have looked at this closely. But that was, that, that was my question, you know, coming into.
That's a great question. And the way this works is, so Boe Park receives 20, 25% bucket of the overall sales tax allocated each year. Right now, that's about 2.5 million. It's, it's stable, it's been growing.
But now it's sort of a stable, a stable range there, 2.5 or so.
The state tax department has recently advised everyone, all municipalities with sales tax, to probably assume a 10% decrease because they're using GIS data now. So that 10%, what we've done is, that's fine. We stress tested our numbers and we dropped that two and a half million down to 2.3 million. Okay? That still pays for the 2023 aquatic complex bonds and the 25A bonds that are going to be issued and gives them a debt service coverage. Right now, about 1.47. And then there's still surplus after that with about $630,000. Now, we, we were hoping it would be above 700,000, but the project contingency is a little bit higher in, in the construction business and the industry now over the last five years, as you know. Materials delays and, you know, having to use different materials, not necessarily less quality materials, but a lot of these factors have caused project budgets to go up because you need, you need more in that contingency account for those things. So we've built that into the budget. We're still under that maximum not to exceed 1 million. And also, you're not just able to sufficiently pay for both of the aquatic complex and then the Lower Marilla improvements with the 2.3 dropping it down 10% on the assumption the state tax department. But you also have the ability to look at the general fund. And in the general fund right now, you know, you've got a couple of, you know, Morgantown Parking Authority, they've got their own district. So they're not paid from the city's general fund. They're paid from the parking authority's fund. For the 2022 multi-facilities bonds that made improvements to City Hall and a lot of other, other assets in the city, those, those bonds are paid from another bucket of sales tax allocation, not Boe Park's.
Right.
And so, you know, those four buckets, they're well laid out. It's Boe Park, it's pension, it's capital improvement projects or capital escrow. And then the other 25% bucket is city council's discretion to either move some of those funds, the 2.5 drop to 2.3 on the assumption.
To another bucket.
Or into the general fund. So the, the, when you.
Look at the general fund, the coverage there is even stronger because you're not paying the, the 22 bonds or the 23A bonds from the general fund. You're paying from the sales tax. So if you drop, if you drop the coverage there, you're looking at anything between, you know, 175 to a three, 3%, 300% on, on coverage ratio. And anything over 1.25 is, is solid. Yeah. The 1.47 gave me everything I needed to know.
Gave you better coverage, yeah.
So you can.
One thing to also keep in mind with respect to these bonds and the 23 bonds is the sales taxes, not actually, it's not a direct pledge.
That's right. That's right.
It's kind of all legally available funds to the city to make the lease payment, including the general fund, sales tax, and others.
Right. And if you notice, in two years, the North Side Fire Station bonds will pay off. And that, that coverage will be even stronger. So that was one of the strong points in the Moody's rating process. They said, you know, you've got a low debt burden relative to your financial picture. So that plus good liquidity and, and strong, strong coverage made them feel pretty good.
Great.
About, about their ratings.
All right. Thank you both so much for all of that, that detailed explanation. And I hope that it better served to, to inform the process.
Because it does, it gives, you know, if you think about it, you, like Tom said, you're not, you're not pledging the sales tax, but it's available. And, you know, as Ryan even said, you know, the plan is to use that sales tax allocation and the coverages are there, the surplus is there. But you've also got the general fund and the general fund coverage is even stronger. So, so you've got, you know, if one is shorter and sufficient, which won't happen, then likely you've got the other one that will go as well.
And it's been very important to the Boe Park Board and Boe Park staff, as you and I discussed earlier, making sure that we have that buffer of unencumbered sales tax of our 25% so that we are able to do not only standard maintenance, but also some smaller project, pavilion replacements, playground replacements, things like that here and there that, that still need to be attended to within the system.
Yeah. You all know that there's, there's no end to the, the projects, the possibilities, right?
Yeah.
Right. But it feels nice as a board when we can make sure that things are on some sort of a schedule for replacement versus have no clue where the next bit's coming from. It's much better to have some money that's set aside that you know can be used for some of those things.
Count it on, for sure.
And we did just create, not everyone may be aware, but Boe Park just created a long-term maintenance account and deposited a million dollars to start that in a high-yield investment account to, to begin that process, to make sure that ongoing, it's, uh, it's covered.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Tom or Rob? We appreciate you all as always. Thank you so much for being here. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Back in.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the bond resolution? Clerk?
Yes. Joe Bougon?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Luise Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven zero. Very exciting. Long-term project we've been looking forward to. Takes us to item B, C, I don't know. We added another one.
C, yeah.
Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance providing for membership of the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item is at the suggestion of the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency as presented at the most recent Committee of the Whole, which changed their, some of the things related to their structure. This is on the regular agenda because there is one change that was brought forward for you all tonight that wasn't presented at the Committee of the Whole, and that is the removal of the term limits. Other than that, the items, the item presented for you to consider tonight is the same information that would have been presented at the prior meeting.
Which is something that council requested, a change that council requested to be made.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Do we have a motion first?
Move to approve.
Second?
Thank you.
Discussion. Seeing none.
This is a great idea to revamp. This is something that, you know, was started fairly recently in time and it's nice to see it retooled and brought back, so.
It does look like, okay, never mind.
Is it?
Yeah. I was just, yeah.
Making sure. Great. Joe Bougon?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Luise Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven zero. Our final item of new business, approval of the 2026 City Council calendar.
Hey, if I may, I have a question. It said that we had, the dates were good with the exception of, it said the municipal league did not land on a date, but the municipal league is the 16th. And our meeting says the 17th of March.
That's to DC.
Yeah. So it says in here that the municipal league is the 16th or the 18th, but we have a meeting on March 17th.
Yeah.
So is that the 2025 or the 2026?
2026.
2026. And they'll see congressional city conferences, March 16th to the 18th. So Mayor, if I may, the items that we have before you all for consideration, there are a couple of items that we would like to seek some options on. What we've seen historically, there are traditionally some items that we definitely cancel or move agendas and trying to get ahead of those items for discussion. So there are two items specifically on the calendar. But there are some additional items that we wanted to make sure to note for discussion tonight, including one of those items, which is the Congressional City Conference, to see if we wanted to make any changes for those. So the, the, if I may, the two items that we have built in for potential first option discussions, and I'm referencing this calendar item we have in front of you today. The first one, we do see often cancellations based on the West Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference. And so we have laid out two options, which would be, one, option one is really not to make any changes and you would have your first meeting on the 4th and your second meeting on the 18th with the Committee of the Whole of August 25th. So that first option would mean that we're, we're not making any changes, assumption that we would be here and there and there would be a quorum to conduct business. That conference this year or the upcoming year is in Charleston. So we are recommending consideration of the, an alternative option, which moves the first meeting to August 11th and the second meeting to August 25th with no Committee of the Whole for that month. Certainly, we, we can entertain other options, but those are two of the options that staff would like to present for council direction tonight.
So option two would be similar to what we did this year?
Yes.
I would like to see option two. Having the two actual meetings, considering that Committee of the Whole is not necessarily required.
I think option two.
Yep.
I had it circled. Great. Well, let's discuss and we'll.
By the way, I'm sorry.
We need to do the rest of it. So, do we need to, Ryan, how do you want us to do this? One at a time or make decisions and approve with one motion? Or?
So, when we come to November, that is Election Day, is what we are making changes or recommended changes. So, the first option we have for you is sliding the meetings in November from a Tuesday to a Wednesday would be option one. So, your first meeting would be November 4th, which is a Wednesday instead of November 3rd. The second meeting would be November 18th, which would also be a Wednesday, with your regular Committee of the Whole on November 24th. The alternative option being proposed for consideration, following the same format of August, would be that you would move your first meeting down a week to November 10th, making your second meeting of the month November 24th with no Committee of the Whole.
So, I think option two would also accommodate the National League of Cities meetings?
They're usually that weekend of the teens in November.
So, if we avoid the teens, yes. If we avoid the 18th. So, option two would avoid, would accommodate the election schedule and also accommodate the National League of Cities, all in one fell swoop.
Does option two for November of 2026 look okay to everybody?
Aye.
Okay. Next?
So, if we may, circle back, those were the two that we wanted to present prepared options, but wanted to provide some additional items for discussion. Historically, we have seen that the council has considered cancellation of the June Committee of the Whole meeting based on vacation, so we wanted to bring that forward. We did not prepare that necessarily as an option here, but that can be incorporated if there's council desire to keep that practice.
So, we had done that in the past on election years, but we are welcome to do that on a regular basis, whatever people wanted to do.
I think if we're on vacation, we should cancel it, otherwise just keep it.
I think it's okay to keep it on the schedule for now, and if we figure out we're not going to have a quorum, or maybe there's not agenda items because a lot of staff is on vacation or something like that. But since it's not an election year, I think, keep it and play it by ear as we get closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, though, on that? Do people, yes. So, leave that one alone. Then, the one that Joe was talking about.
Yes, I, we do also have in January, the West Virginia, West Virginia Municipal League Midwinter Conference, which is January 25th through 27th. The only potential conflict with that would be the Committee of the Whole on January 27th. Certainly, our meetings start later, so depends on travel time for that meeting, so what staff has prepared, we did not assume a movement of that Committee of the Whole, but wanted to provide that for consideration or discussion.
That might be okay, right? Because it's the third day? Or is that, is that when they have the?
I don't know.
I don't think we've ever had issue with that one.
That date also changes, so sometimes it falls in different weeks, and I think even this past year, it fell in, like, March.
March 16th.
Because of the new governor, so that date doesn't always align, or fall in line with council meetings. Looks like these are the dates, are the 25th through 27th, so sometimes the first two nights are something, and the last night is not something.
Last one is normally training for election.
Yeah, so that's usually not.
I think we could probably leave this and play it by ear after we get that conference schedule.
But the one, the one that's in the middle is the one that Councilman Bugan brought up, the 17th of March, that's right in the middle of the Congressional City Conference, that we could do something about if we chose now.
Yes, ma'am, so that would be our final item. We would request discussion on tonight, which would be your March, which would conflict with your second regular March meeting on March 17th, similar to the pattern that we have seen. This is for the NLC Congressional City Conference that is held in Washington, DC. Currently, that's targeted for March 16th through the 18th. We could either keep the schedule as it currently aligns with normal meetings, or following the similar options that we see on the other two months that we have discussed, we could turn the second meeting of the month into the March 31st, which is typically your Committee of the Whole meeting.
There are five Tuesdays that month.
Yeah, you could have it on the 24th, Jack.
10th, 24th, 31st, or 3rd, 24th.
Yeah, do we want to do 24th instead?
That sounds brilliant.
So, only changing Tuesday, March 17th to Tuesday, March 24th, since we are blessed with an extra Tuesday that month.
Also, the 17th is St. Patrick's Day.
You don't want to spend St. Patrick's Day here?
No, I didn't know that. I don't know what else.
Like, it might be a holiday, federal holiday?
Yeah, I wasn't sure, but.
I don't think it is.
Don't tell WVU that. Sorry.
Okay.
It's okay, no, I don't want to work that.
So, may we have a motion to approve with changes of Tuesday, March 17th being moved to Tuesday, March 24th for our second regular meeting, going with option two of Tuesday, August 11th, and Tuesday, August 25th, and then option two for November as well, Tuesday, November 10th, and Tuesday, November 24th.
Moved with those amendments.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion?
No.
Clerk? Yes. Joe Bugan?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven zero. And City Managers report.
Thank you. Thank you to Mayor and Council for that direction, allows us to work to try to prepare the year in advance, so that's very helpful, I appreciate that. Just a couple of brief items for you all tonight, making sure you're aware that the item related to the warming shelter stays a top priority for staff and administration as we are working through those options and continue to have those discussions. There is a special meeting of the MCR Board early tomorrow morning that we will be attending and having some further discussions with them. This week, there has been additional discussions with Catholic Charities who has provided some operational positivity towards the West Run option as a potential preferred option, so that's an item we will be looking at closely and having that discussion with the MCR Board tomorrow as well. The main area of concern related to that option, or a area of concern related to that option, is related to transit. Emily has reached out to the mountain lion, so we will continue to engage. We haven't had a response back, but making sure that we're trying to support the partnership and moving forward on that in any way possible. At this time, we have not received any requests for additional funding at this time. I will keep you up to date as that moves forward. I will not go too much into it, because I know the city clerk will want to present on this item, but as mentioned previously, the Municipal Government Week is this upcoming week of October 13th through the 19th. I wanted to make sure to recognize the clerk and all the staff who's been supporting her in putting together a lot of events and programs related to supporting that week. Not only is it an opportunity for education, engagement with the children in our community, but is a great opportunity for, to recognize our staff as well, so want to make sure to pass along my gratitude for all the work that's going into that. Our offices are closed October 13th in observance for Columbus Day, and October 14th, we do have the MMMPO Downtown Micro Simulation Study as a reminder at 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., a presentation on the item. October 31st, we have the Halloween Spooktacular coming up at the amphitheater, starting at 4:00 p.m., which will be trunk or treat, followed by some movies in the park, and as a reminder, we have set the time for trick or treat from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that day. And the last item I wanted to mention is the upcoming November meetings, in line with some of the conversations that we had tonight related to scheduling. We do have several counselors who will be out for the November 18th meeting, which will be related to the National League of Cities event, and so we are proposing that the 25th becomes that regular meeting, which would be your typical Committee of the Whole. So, we will move forward with that change if there are no objections. That concludes my report tonight.
Great. Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share with folks who may be watching still, or any of you who, who would like to find out information about our Municipal Government Week, and thank you, Mayor, for giving me that proclamation to accept for the city, and really, it is a congratulation to all of us, too, and all of our staff who have worked really hard. But if you go to our website at MorgantownWV.gov, and you scroll all the way down to the bottom almost, there's a page that says news and highlights, and that's where you'll find news releases that our Communications Department puts on there for our community. You'll see all kinds of things. You'll see that this week is Fire Prevention Week, so congratulations to Fire Chief Gary Freshour and Captain Jason Quinn, who have put forth some things, they're educational things for our residents to look and be educated about batteries, so take a look when you have a chance. You also see that there is information about the Municipal Government Week, so if you click on that, it tells you what's going on. So, I'll try to go through these pretty quickly. As City Manager Miller stated, Monday is a holiday for us, so even though we will not be at work, things will be going on and happening on our, on our website. I'll tell you about that in one moment, but Tuesday, we will be doing a Touch a Truck event at Mountain View Elementary, and vehicles such as a police cruiser, fire truck, bucket truck, dump truck, excavator, parking authority vehicle, and IT equipment, backhoe, airport vehicles, GIS equipment. We will have all of those things there for the students to partake in and walk through and experience sitting on them maybe, or touching them and asking our staff questions. And we, it's our third year, again, that we've done this, and we've had great response from the principals and the kids, so you all are welcome, and I'll send that information to you. There will also be a photography contest, and on our website, you can click on this little link that tells you all about the details, so there's a photography contest, coloring contest, it's all on the website, so take a look when you have a chance, spread the word for kids to take, participate in this activity, it's pretty cool. One other thing that I was talking about earlier is the Communications Department has reached out to our department heads, and most of them, and hopefully the mayor too, and I'm not sure if they've reached out to you or not.
It's scheduled tomorrow.
Will be reading a book and getting videoed, and they will be publishing that on our city's website for folks or kids to get on there and watch anytime they want, and it's all about your community and what the city does and the staff does for the, for the kids and for the people who live here. So, that's pretty cool. We'll also be recognizing employee, the employee with the most years of service here at the city in Morgantown. And just take a look when, when you all have time, and information will be coming out to you all, so you can participate as well. We have a, we have a mock City Council meeting, I'll let Counselor Boo Gannon tell you about that, he's the one that's been planning that with our Morgantown High students. We have a Wear Pink Day, because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we'll be supporting that and showing our support, those who are affected, who have been affected by breast cancer, so Wear Pink.
Which day is that?
It's Wednesday. And then we'll be having a photo over at the North Side Fire Station at 2:00 on that day, you'll be getting that information as well, an email will invite you all to come, all the staff who would like to come participate in Wear Pink Day and get their photo taken. We'd love to have you all there. I think that's all I have for Municipal Government Week. We do have five new firefighters who will be starting their career with the City of Morgantown next Tuesday. You've heard me talk about it for months and months, but finally, they're here, congratulations to those new recruits, and we wish them much success. And Fire Civil Service Commission will be meeting soon to schedule new entry-level exams and open houses, and I'll be keeping you up to date on that. One new police officer, James Wolf, started his career with the City of Morgantown this week and will be sworn in tomorrow. The Police Civil Service Commission will be, will hold entry-level exams again this next Saturday, October 18th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Building. Folks who are interested, if they have not yet applied, they can certainly do that online, or they can come to the City Court's office and turn an application in there. They will take, those who will be taking the exam will take a written exam, once they pass that, they'll take a physical agility, same day. Those who pass the agility will go on to have an interview with the Police Civil Service And then, lastly, I'd like to take a moment to encourage our community involvement. We currently have a number of vacancies on our boards and commissions. These volunteer positions are a great way to get involved and make a difference right here in our city and our community. We truly appreciate our volunteers, we, we meet, volunteers come here every single day to meet on a number of boards and commissions, so, so I just want to say thank you to them for their dedication, and, and I invite folks to take a look at our website to see what we have available, if they'd like to participate and be a volunteer. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Council for the attention to the Lower Marilla Project financing this evening. As Director Wild said, it's been a long-running project with a lot of effort put in by the park staff and others, who will continue working with our financing team, with Bow Park and with the city administration, to get those offering documents finalized and out and get the financing closed. I think in the future, for these, for these bond issues, we can provide you ahead of time that kind of projection information from the underwriter or replacement agent to, to give Council a better read on the financing projections and what the funding agency is planning with its revenue source. So, helpful to know that, always helpful to have a deep dive into the mechanics of bond financing as well, too. Secondarily, Council approved tonight the updates to the vacant structure exemption procedures. I will circle up with our, mainly our code enforcement staff on those and get in place any new processes they need to have to follow that, but that should, I think, simplify the process and, and help out both property owners and the council. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. We'll move into report from council members. Deputy Mayor Butcher, would you like to go first?
Oh, gosh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I guess I did want to mention a couple of things, because they were on the consent agenda, and so we didn't get, like, a chance to talk about them. I think the city attorney went over the main one that I wanted to just bring to the public's attention, because if you don't read the packet, I understand that most people that are probably watching this meeting are reading the packet, and they probably know what's going on anyway, but in case you didn't, that update for the exemption procedure for the vacant structures code is something that came up, because we had people who sometimes felt like it was an undue burden, it was sometimes an undue burden of council, to have people always come before us to plead their case about why their structure is vacant, and so this allowed for the streamlining of that process. So, I appreciate staff taking that on so quickly after we kind of identified it as an issue, and then we have it on agenda, and we're able to make it a little bit better than it was before, and it has been in the years past. There's also a bunch of zoning reclassifica, not a bunch, but a couple of zoning reclassifications that we went through, and so you may have seen some of those signs go up for the zoning reclassification, but one of them in particular was kind of like for a grandfather property that had a, a use, that it was used for, that it kind of fell out of that use in the zone, as the zoning evolved over time, or maybe it wasn't zoned at all at a point in time, and so they had to reapply there and didn't realize that what they were planning to use the structure for was something that they couldn't necessarily do anymore, so that's why it was rezoned. The other things I just want to mention was, some of the, they went to the Arts Commission just to give Council an update of what was discussed there. The computer that runs the signs at the Warner needs replaced, and so Vincent is looking for money for that. I did ask Vincent if we could just use any computer, and he said no, so. Just to have that conversation off, I asked, be a specific computer for it, yeah. And then, I learned while I was there that, because there's a porta potty, one of the ones that we were talking, that the city's posted on there about having as a use case on the trails and stuff like that, Vincent told me, I don't know if it's true, city management can back him up, I guess, that those porta potties cost $150. Is that true, for a month?
That is correct, and that includes cleaning them out.
Yeah, and cleaned every week for that $150, is that right? That's nothing, that's crazy, anyway, I thought that was crazy.
Bow Park's been using those in parks for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, just like, why don't we have more, that's so cheap, anyway, it just blew my mind for some reason. The Eastern Roller Mill, he's coming along, getting that updated, he said everything's cleared out at this point, and it's just kind of ready to be operational, he said there's some roof issues that need to be addressed, but other than that, it's good to go, and that the museum's hiring a position- That's nothing. That's crazy. Anyway, I thought that was crazy. Yeah, yeah. Just like, why don't we have more? That's so cheap. Anyway, it just blew my mind for some reason. The Eastern Roller Mill, he's coming along, getting that updated. He said everything's cleared out at this point and it's just kind of ready to be operational. He said there's some roof issues that need to be addressed, but other than that, it's good to go. And that the museum's hiring a position that's part-time, I think three days a week if I remember correctly. That would help out at the museum, but also the Eastern Roller Mill. And I did want to ask staff at some point if they could let us know how annexation conversation was going around that area or if that's still in play at all. The, there's been a longstanding sightlines issue on Eastern Avenue. I won't say exactly where, not to call anybody out, but and I just heard from Drew Candace today that it was resolved. So there's kind of like an issue where people were pulling out of this one street and could not see around. And he said today it was resolved. It will continue to be something we need to stay on top of. Couple other things was just, it does appear that the Housing Advisory Board, in terms of its membership, is completely defunct. So it's probably good for us to have a conversation at some point about what we're going to do with that, if it's something that we want to continue doing something with. I think it's valuable to have something like in a housing advisory board. So I want people to know that most of its membership has no idea that they even serve on it or doesn't care to serve on it anymore, so, other than maybe two people. So we need to rethink what that board is or put new membership on something. Final thing I wanted to say was for warming shelter transportation issues, I would say if we find that the West Run facility is a better fit, we figured out transportation issues to a warming shelter before in terms of volunteer stuff. I, I am not all that concerned about making sure that people have transportation out there. I know that it's something that people have concerns about. It seems like something that would be a big concern, but I've been able to coordinate volunteer efforts for transportation in the past and they've run pretty smoothly, so I wouldn't be too, too concerned about it, but just food for thought. And that'll end my report. Are we going this way now?
Sure.
All right. So to echo councillor Butcher about the vacant structure changes, I mean, I think that's, that was a, to me, that was a great example of how municipal government can and should react in, yeah, in response to, in response to the community and kind of, you know, efficiency and effectiveness. In fact, I was able to, I ran into one of the, one of the folks that was in my first, my, our first, my first, mine and Jody's, I guess first vacant structure hearing at, at First Friday last week and, and was, was, they were happy to hear that we, we listened and responded and, and, and that those changes that she recommended had been incorporated. So, so thanks for that. I want to say thanks to Jamie and staff and, and, and Mayor Trumbull for engaging so thoughtfully and aggressively in, in the warming shelter, you know, problem solving process. It's not, it's not something that, you know, that we, we wished, we wished that we would have had a solution and we thought we did, but thank you for all the hard work. I know it's, it's not been easy and and I appreciate it. The Parking Authority hasn't still not met. We're still one board member shy of being able to, to be able to, being able to have a meeting, so if anyone has a constituent that they think, that lives within city limits and they think might be interested in serving on the Parking Authority, please encourage them to apply. Yeah, Joe?
I didn't see any openings. Is it?
I, I don't know. That must
Probably needs updated, but I think at least three have dropped off. I've been encouraging everyone I know.
They, they have.
Chose not to renew. Chose not to renew.
Chose not to renew. Yeah, right now it's just myself and Charlie McEwen. We've
Thank goodness for Charlie.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for Charlie. Charlie's been holding, carrying the water for the Parking Authority Board for a long time. But we've got a couple of people that Dana's been recruiting, Charlie's been recruiting, I've been recruiting. You know, people keep saying that they're going to apply, they're going to apply, they're going to apply, you know. Save sitting down with them and helping them apply. It hasn't happened yet, so. And, and then finally, I want to recognize kind of the, the, what happened tonight and just share my gratitude for the partnership that was, that was illustrated by virtue of our meeting earlier, a joint meeting with the county commission. I could not be happier with the dialogue, the level of engagement and interest in, and the county commission's willingness to partner to, to, to engage in projects that move our community forward. So with that, I'll end my report.
We had a lovely kind of end of summer, beginning of fall neighborhood picnic with the Suncrest Neighborhood Association. Chris Gluck, who has been the orchestrator along with Matt Cross of Neighbor Association Picnics as long as I can remember, served up several selections of, of food that he cooked himself in large, large containers. I made a cake for Chris. I don't always make cakes. You're more the cake person, actually, as a professional at it, but anyway, I, I made a chocolate cake for Chris Gluck and and wrote in cursive, so only people who can read cursive could read the cake. And we had a little, we had a nice little celebration. Attended the Friday night arts walk with my friend who used to live in, in my neighborhood. And so we got a chance to go eat at Montblaise, which was wonderful. We, it's so full. We were sitting up at the bar to eat because that's what was, that was what was available. And went up in town pretty much everywhere we could think of and it was a really, really nice night, nice weather and nice activities throughout the downtown. It was very nice. I have had some discussion one time with Mountain Lion and at the end of the discussion asked some, some of the questions about the alternative warming shelter and I think that part of the issue is that, that that route, part of that route that goes through apartments is, I think, paid for by WVU and maybe has some restrictions on being open during holidays when WVU is in session or something like that. So anyway, Maria Smith of Mountain Lion would be glad to talk to all of you about these issues and I do not know the particulars, so I just filed away the information that they would be very happy to talk with all of you and try to figure out transportation for wherever, wherever we were having our shelter. And this is a note to ask you a question later and I'm good.
Did you walk as a zombie?
I did not walk as a zombie this year. I did not. I did not have, because there was a football game that night, I could not engage the portions of my household who like to dress up as zombies. And so they were, they were resting up before the football game and so anyway, I wimped out on the zombie part. But I do know that it did happen and I appreciate you giving me the information because it was difficult to find. Art party. Art party is who you find every year to do the zombie walk, which is super fun.
I was out of town last week during the committee of the whole and so I didn't have an opportunity to participate in the discussions and there were several issues, important issues that were brought up. And while I don't want to rehash or put you through everything, I would say, I did, I did want to note on the issue of the affordable housing presentation and ideas of moving forward. I did catch up on the meeting. And thank you to Ricky and the staff for putting that together. There seemed to be hesitance to move forward on any of the ideas that were presented until there was a more comprehensive plan. And while the impacts of our decisions obviously can't be taken lightly and have to be incredibly measured and considered, I do find it important to state my desire and motivation to choose something to move forward on. The perfectly packaged comprehensive plan doesn't exist and we won't know what works for our city and our folks, our people, until we try something. And so I just wanted to publicly state my intent to move a solution forward rather than waiting and planning more. I don't want to understate the importance of public input. Obviously, I'm a huge proponent of it. I think those listening sessions that were mentioned at the meeting last week have to be very carefully considered and planned. We need to make sure they are very accessible to everyone that our affordable housing decisions impact, which would require a lot of concerns and a lot of accessibility options. And as Mayor Trumbull noted last week, there just isn't any reason we can't do both. There isn't any reason we can't hold these public input sessions and move forward on some policy that solves some problems. And I, I just wanted to state that publicly, that that is my intent. I will be attending my first Historic Landmarks Commission meeting this month. We haven't been able to meet for a couple of months due to attendance, so I'm looking forward to that, meeting with the boys. And on the topic of the South Park area neighbors, we had our first meeting with our new officers and attendance was fantastic. The energy was wonderful. We had lots of new faces and new ideas and it was really encouraging. Our next meeting is the last Wednesday in October, so that would be the 29th at 7:00 PM at the church that is on that street. But look at our, look at Span's Facebook and Instagram. We also have another council meeting. I'll have the church name by then.
It's a church next to Morgantown High Traditional.
I know exactly what church you're talking about.
Mark, Mark Downs, please state the church.
Church across from Dominos.
It's the church across from Dominos.
I don't know the name of it, but I know the church.
My friend, apologies to that church. That concludes my report. Thank you.
And we'll know the name next
Yes, I promise. I'm going to look it up right now.
I don't have a long one tonight. I just wanted to, our Health and Wellness Commission did a, the, the arts walk and our, set up the Smile Express. We had a booth that gave out Narcan and other items. Let's see on the mic. And I was aware of Eastern and Martin. I was made aware of it on Thursday and I reported it to Jamie and Code, I'm sorry, city manager and Code. So that's probably the end of my report.
All right. First, let me say thank you to Christine, City Clerk Wade, for all the hard work you've done with the upcoming Municipal Education Week. That is a lot of effort on your part and I really appreciate all the work you put into that every year. I'm excited to bring the students here for our city council meeting. That, well, our mock city council meeting next Thursday. And also help me out, I believe it's Paint the Town Purple right now. What does
In recognition of National Domestic Violence Month.
Okay, because it said to wear purple, so I wore my, only, I don't know if it's purple or burgundy, but I wanted to do my part to bring awareness to that. And speaking of that, I hopefully will hear back. I signed up for the safety walk that will be going on next week. And speaking of safety and streets, I'm appreciative to the city for shutting down Madigan Avenue for Halloween this year. The neighbors are all very excited for that. And smoking, looking. That concludes my report.
If I may, it's the first Christian church.
I knew it was something like that.
Thank you.
Did you Google that or did someone text you?
I looked at my Instagram.
Just to touch on Deputy Mayor Butcher and councillor Downs' statements about the city being able to respond to concerns or things that are brought up in a timely manner, such as with vacant structure codes. Yesterday, yesterday, Deputy Mayor Butcher and I had the opportunity to have a phone call with Director Jaeger about some housing issues that, that a resident was experiencing. And I would like to see us, and I'm sure this is something for Attorney Simonton as well, I would like to see us respond to the issue. We've had several incidents of rezoning lately because of a non-conforming uses grandfathered status expiring. And I would like us to be able to, for someone within our organization to be able to use some discretion to extend that grandfathered status should we choose to do so. If a building has been historically used as a three apartment complex, we shouldn't necessarily have to make a spot zone or a rezone just for it to continue to be used that way because someone hasn't been living there for a year while renovations were happening or while a sale was going on. I think that the building sitting there and deteriorating is much more of a detriment to the, to the community and the neighborhood. I just don't think we should necessarily have to go through the Planning Commission and City Council for rezoning when it's historically been used that way. So I think that's another thing where we can remove some of the, the burden and governmental red tape and just kind of take care of some of those issues proactively.
So you'd like to see that be an administrative decision?
I, I think someone, whether that's council or administration, should have some sort of discretion to be able to you know, maybe that's like we did with the vacant structures. If, if staff recommends extending that and no one on council disagrees, we don't necessarily have to go through those, those steps. I don't know what steps are required for that, but it made me think of the conversation that Deputy Mayor Butcher and I had with Director Jaeger yesterday, so.
I, I've actually asked Ryan today to draft us an ordinance, but we probably do need to, when we have it come forward, probably consider like what was the non-conforming use to begin with? Is that something that we would like to make sure is not being used for anymore?
There just needs to be a, an element of some discretionary decision making in there instead of going through the entire process of
But I think especially in the case of residential where it's, like that specific case should have been a no, like, brainer. It should kept its status.
Right. And we've had a couple of those recently, so just made me think about it. Some information that I've already shared with council, but since a member of the public asked today, I will say that over the next week or two, I will be doing several proclamations on site at events as we have made more available to members of the community this Thursday. I will be at the Ronald McDonald House ribbon cutting, giving a proclamation there. On Saturday, I will be joining the tree board at the farmer's market for a proclamation for Arbor Day. And I will be at a candlelight vigil at Woodburn Circle on October 23rd at 7:00 PM for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We will be doing a proclamation there. So just for everyone's information. I would like to thank the, the volunteer Bo Park Board as well as City Attorney Simonton and the city's HR Director, Betsy, and also manager Miller and Damian Davis and Sarah Cranston with the library. Cranston with the library, for participating in an extensive Bow Park hiring process. We, we heard earlier this evening, and many people already know, that Director Wiles is intending to retire at the end of November, so we have been putting in a lot of time and effort in, in recruiting her replacement, and I just wanted to thank them all for participating in that process. It's, it's been a long process, but we are nearing the end, so, excited to share that with you all, probably within, within the week, I hope. We did get to visit the ice rink recently, and those renovations are going very well. They are nearing the end. One of our Bow Park employees today said he was doing the punch list of last items so that.
It's gorgeous.
The contractor can get out and the ice can get in. They are hoping to open in about two weeks, so definitely make a plan to stop into the renovated ice arena. It's very nice. I have been leading a lot of volunteer groups, as is usual, just wanted to thank the Morgantown Forward Group. We spent two days over, two weekends ago, doing a lot of trail building, invasive species removal, and painting under the university bridge along the Deckers Creek Trail, and I also led a group this past weekend, about 25 WVU boxing club students were looking for a project to do, so the director of Mon River Trails Conservancy and I set them up. My husband and I led them. We painted the fences in between the amphitheater and the Seneca Center. All of them got painted, those students moved right through, we scraped, we painted, we cleaned, they cleaned up trash at the same time. It's pretty impressive. I need another big group that's ready to do the amphitheater to the dam now, so, if you know of anyone looking for an event. I thought Counselor Downs would mention the concert that we held a week or two ago. He was instrumental in bringing Dead all along, and about, I don't know, 300 people to 500 people.
Five.
A lot of people, more than I can, estimating crowd size is not my, my strong suit, but several hundred people attended the, the concert and art market and bubble party under, along the trail there behind South High Station to kind of celebrate all of the work that's been happening there, and it was, it was a great event. So thanks to Counselor Downs and LJ Giuliani, who worked with the band to put that on. I just showed up and manned a table to get, we got about 30 more people to sign up for volunteer work, so, a great event. Yeah, I don't think there's, is there anything else anyone wishes to add, or there's no executive session?
I'll just say to that end, thanks for, thanks to, you know, city staff for helping us move that permitting process forward and, and, you know, making that happen. I didn't mention it, I should have, but it was, it was a great event, and there have been a lot of, a lot, a lot of accolades since, and a lot of discussion about how do we do more of these, so.
Well, we're going to need more volunteers, because it was exhausting.
Yeah, it was, it was terribly exhausting, but it was, it was well worth it.
Yeah.
Move to.
Second.
Adjourn.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought, I thought that's what the law was.
That was the law. Yep. Thank you.